Folks, it's a few minutes past seven. Let's start our meeting. We are still waiting for two members, but we do have enough, I think, to proceed with the two things. And before we dig into too much, I do want to point out that I'm using an audio recorder. Kathy's using an audio recorder. Lake Cam is making a video recording. I need to ask if anybody here is making an audio recording. Good. Seeing none, thank you. We have a couple of things we can do in the interim while we wait for Janice. I hope she comes.
She's not coming.
Janice is not coming?
No.
Oh, and John's gonna be late. Okay, I guess we're gonna have to move ahead with who we have. We do have a question before us. One of our vacancies, we have an applicant for one of our vacancies, and that is our friend Jim Gauvey, who was a member up until about a year ago, and he's decided to come back again. The selectmen would like us to indicate whether we would be willing to take Jim back on the board. What's our opinion of that?
Glad to have him back.
Yeah, absolutely.
It sounds like we have consensus of approval. Good. And at this point, I think we welcome Jerry Noble to our board as an associate member. Good luck. Condolences.
Good luck.
Bless my God, Bill.
You can submit your resignation any time, but I'm not asking for that.
Thanks for the call.
Let's take, let's put the minutes off until after we dig through business. Tonight, we have continued hearing to dig into. We have two additional hearings. We have three additional hearings, two for dwellings and one for Monroe Associates. Who's here to represent Monroe? Not here yet. Okay. Ms. Maxey, we will, it's 7:06. We can reopen your hearing from last month, and the issue, as I recall from last month, was the plans you submitted were not fully dimensioned. And the specific issue we were looking at was the dimension of the placement of, was it, was it a garage you were putting in or accessory building?
Correct.
And its intrusion into the setback, and the degree of, the dimension of that intrusion was not indicated at all in the drawings. So you now have something?
I had Jason from OPEC make the drawing of this.
Oh, good.
And you also had me go to conservation in addition to the drawing, and I have received approval from the protective side of the mail.
See what you have. Come on up. Okay. You have just one set of drawings, right?
That's all they gave me, yes.
Okay. So you, your proposed garage is equally distant from each, equally spaced from your two side boundaries?
Correct.
Fifteen feet each?
Yes.
And, take a look, Joe, and then I'll pass it down. Let me see precisely what you were asking for here. So you were asking for relief for the setback on, basically, the two side setbacks. Is that right?
That is correct.
Nothing else?
Yes.
Just to refresh our memory, we have an August 5th memo from the Board of Health. The Board of Health has reviewed the petition for the proposed 15-by-22-story shed at the above-mentioned address according to the plans submitted. The proposed shed slab foundation meets the required 10-foot setback to the leaching area. Shed only not to be used as habitable space. We have, again, to refresh our memory, we have an August 12th memo from Conservation Commission. The referenced property was reviewed on August 12th. The proposed location for the 15-by-22-story shed is within the 100-foot buffer zone of an adjacent wetland approximately 26 feet. Therefore, a request for determination of applicability will be required.
Correct.
Okay.
I have that way there.
And we have the August 1st memo at their, this is from the planning board. At their Thursday, July 25th meeting, the planning board reviewed the above petition for hearing. The board had no comments. Okay. Is anybody here to speak for or against this petition that was continued from last month? So Jerry, just so you understand, my law says you're supposed to be 20 feet from each side. This is a small lot, hard to put the, hard to fit the building to the size she wants in, so she's asking, basically, for a five-foot intrusion into that 20-foot wide margin that's supposed to exist on side and back margins, property lines, excuse me. And the question before us is, do we feel that this is to the detriment of the town, the neighbors, the community, or to the bylaws? Who has an opinion, please?
Well, if I remember right, the last meeting that we had, one of our neighbors was there, and the neighbor had no problem with it.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? I don't have a problem with that. The only thing that we would need to be careful of is that it doesn't magically overnight, sometime in the dark of the night, become living space or a bunkhouse for the kids during the summer.
Correct.
Which means no heat, no insulation, and no running water.
We didn't discuss the heat. I was going to put heat in the building. AC heat for my storage, so that it's temperature-controlled. There was not gonna be any running water, but I did say that there would be heat. It's probably just gonna be a splitless duct. It's just for temperature control, so things don't get moldy.
Properties on the lake are particularly attractive to summer visitors, and...
Well, we wouldn't need heat in the summer.
Well, kids coming to visit, kids for the summer. Not you, but maybe a future owner. That's why we always look a little carefully at how people wanna assemble a really nice garage, two-story garage.
Well, I do wanna have it, yeah, nice for my things. I don't have a basement in my house, so I do have some things that are valuable that I would like to store that would be in a nice place, not just, you know...
But not habitable?
Not habitable, correct.
If we were to approve it, would you object to a restriction that does say not habitable, no running water?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Would anybody care to, is there any further discussion on this? Anne, Chris, Dave?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal as submitted with the caveat that the building is non-habitable.
Non-habitable, no running water?
No running water.
Non-habitable.
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 We have a motion made.
And seconded.
And David has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It'll take two weeks, 14 days, to prepare the paperwork, and then there's a 20-day appeal period.
Okay.
Once the paperwork is submitted. I wouldn't put a shovel in the ground until the appeal period is done. You'll receive everything in the mail with the instructions. I think you know all about that, I'm sure.
Yes.
If you don't, Derek does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good night.
Our next hearing is for the, what's he said? I need, do you have the notice for the Dunbar hearing? No, no, the, oh, notice. What do I do with mine? Oh, you have it? Thank you, Kathy. Daryl and Kelly Fess? Okay, good. The Lakeville zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Master General laws, Chapter 48, amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, September 19th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Peasance Street, upon the petition of Daryl and Kelly Fess. A special permit under 6.1 and 7.4 is requested to raise a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and shed and construct a new dwelling that would be within the side setback and also construct a 24-by-24-foot garage with a deck that would be within both side setbacks on a non-conforming lot as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is 12 Dunbar Road. Thank you. Good. Kenny?
My name is Rick Sharon. I'm engineer, working for Mr. and Mrs. Fess, who are here with us this evening. My office, Sharon Associates, designed a plan for rebuilding this house. This is a pre-existing non-conforming, legally pre-existing non-conforming house. It was built back in 1940. It's in poor repair. Recently, the prior owner passed away, and it was put up for sale, and Mr. and Mrs. Fess had purchased it. The house, as I said, is in very poor repair, and their desire is to tear down the house and rebuild. We've got the existing setbacks at six and a half feet off of the, would be the northeastern sideline, and just a little over 20 feet, 22 feet from the opposite sideline. What's proposed is to put a new house in, if you're not in a good position to see this. The existing house is just outlined in green, and it's not in on the plan that you have. The new house has been hatched in in yellow, showing the new location, holding essentially the same setback on the right-hand property line, as you look at the plan, and you want to move up to the sea or something. And holding a 20-foot setback on the opposite side. There's about a 50-foot setback from the edge of the water down on Long Pond, and setback, of course, is more than required off of the other property there. Now, this is a very odd property, and I really haven't seen like this before. This is a case where Dunbar Road comes in and stops at one side of this property, at this property line. It continues again on the other side. I'm told that it wraps around back into Churchill Shores at the end of that road, but there is a traveled way that comes across the property here. There's another traveled way that takes care of a couple of houses where the cranberry bogs are off the south side of this property.
Is that an easement, or is that a public way?
They're essentially, they're prescriptive easements. There's no written easements on this. I understand some of the people let down in here have wording in their deeds saying they have the right to pass through here to get out to County Road, but there's nothing written on this one. But because it's been here for so long, it's essentially a prescriptive easement, almost an adverse possession type of case. So it's a situation where Mr. and Mrs. Fess realize, you're not gonna block this off and take that land back. This is something that's been in use for many, many years. There's no intention here to try to prevent anyone from using that. They've recognized the fact that it's a prescriptive easement. So essentially, the issue here is building the larger housing here. It's impossible to meet the 20-foot setbacks unless you put in a mobile home in here, and that wouldn't be conducive to the established nature of the neighborhood.
Well, you're meeting the 20-foot on one side.
Yes, we can hold the 20 feet there.
And your setback on the other side is equivalent to what it was with the old house?
Yes, that's correct.
And is that also true with the proposed garage? It looks like, is that, say, eight and a half feet?
The garage is, well, we've got that at eight and a half feet off of the line where the existing house is at six and a half feet, so a couple of feet over there.
Right.
We can't quite make the 20 feet because of the traveled way coming in from Dunbar Road. We can't really turn this to pivot it so that it'd be parallel with the property line because of that. So that forces us to turn this on a slight angle. That cuts it down to 17 feet on the opposite side versus the 20 that we would've liked to have gotten there.
Now, it looks like, over here on your drawing, you show the impervious area of 2,956 square feet, more or less, and the total, if I read this right, the total lot is 11,760, so you said that the impervious coverage is 25.1. Is that just the house, garage, stairs, and deck?
Yes.
Have you included the parking or driveways?
No, we did not. That can be done in stone if it's necessary. There is some, some kind of busted-up pavement on both of these traveled ways, all right, but where it's being used by other parties, I'm not sure if that's something that should be assessed against.
Well, is the footage, square footage of the roadway included in that 11,000?
No. Oh, it is. It is within the 11,000 square feet of the lot.
So some of that 11,000 square feet of the lot that you use in your calculation has impervious coverage that you haven't, have not included to the impervious side of the equation?
Yes.
And our bylaw does say that driveways and parking lots are considered impervious.
Even if they're stone-covered, is that?
I think, I think the rationale is that even if they're stone-covered, after they're packed down and enough engine oil is dripped on them, they become impervious. I think that's the thinking. I'm not part of the history of it, but if we take a conservative approach, they would be considered impervious. And we do say 25% is the maximum.
Yes. Again, we're looking at this here as a lot that's under 12,000 square feet with zoning. That's 70,000 square foot zoning, so...
I know.
25% on a 70,000 square foot lot would be a much greater amount than we have here.
We've seen this over and over and over in Lakeville, and more often because there's less, there are fewer buildable lots, and there's many more small lots that people want to improve, so this is an issue that we grapple with.
Yes.
And I'm sure you can understand the logic there. This is about a 3,000-square-foot house?
The house area, if I could just...
No, I'm not talking about the footprint. I'm talking about the living space.
Okay, it's an 18-by-76-square-foot living, but it's about 3,000. About 3,000, yes.
This is a pretty healthy house for a small lot. I mean, I'd love to have it, honestly. Is there a possibility of trimming this down a little bit?
I'd rather not.
Of course not, but is there a possibility?
Well, you know, I would rather look at other options. I mean, I'd have to allow those people to travel across that land, and if we did some other type of dry wood that would be considered permeable, I would rather tear up all that concrete and do something different, whether it's, you know, pavers or it's, you know, the type of thing where grass grows up through it. I would prefer to go that way. I don't know what my neighbors are gonna think about that.
We get particularly concerned with properties that are on the water, even though it is Long Pond, it's not Assawampson, but it's a secondary water source. So we tend to look a little more carefully at these kinds of situations. What do my colleagues on the board think about this?
That's a big house.
That's a big house.
It's a huge house.
What's the setback between the existing prescriptive easement and the proposed garage on the right-hand side as you're looking at that plan?
That would be, I don't have it marked off on here, but I'm gonna say it's about three feet.
Three feet to the edge of the road to this, to this proposed garage?
Yes.
And what about on the other side?
The opposite side would be closer to 10 feet over there.
Okay. Do you think you have safety issues, Chris?
I mean, is the fire department using this road? They're gonna need to, first responders need to use this road to get to the houses that have frontage on the other side?
Well, as I said, I believe there's a connection on the other side of Dunbar Road when it gets down through here where it ties into Churchill Shores, so there are...
Do they plow that road? Do they deliver the mail? Do utility trucks, oil-delivery vehicles, use that road?
I'm sure. It's getting traffic by anyone who needs to get down the service.
Yeah, and there are concerns when it gets snowy and icy and...
Yep.
I had missed that, but Chris brings up a good point. That's three or four feet there. That is really close.
That is the backside of that garage building, so there's no doors on that side that's...
Structure in the existing road, though, that's, can that be shifted on the lot or moved around away from the road? Possibly the deck beam removed? I mean, a deck on a garage? Is there a reason for a deck on a garage?
Access, I guess, to the second-floor level, to have a studio up there.
So you're gonna have a second-floor level on the garage?
Yes.
It's gonna be finished space?
A studio.
Studio.
There's not gonna be any bathrooms or water in there.
Oh, this is frustrating. We, the lots get smaller and smaller, and the houses get bigger and bigger.
And then earlier, we have been through conservation, and there were a couple of minor changes on the plan from the one that was originally submitted, but nothing that affects the location of the houses or any of the setbacks there. It primarily had to do with additional hay bales at the foot of the hill and the auger method of tying in the new stairway going down the hill.
While you're standing there thinking about what we've said, let me just read aloud the memos we have. We have a September 4th memo from the Board of Health that says, "The Board of Health has reviewed the petitions for the above-referenced address. This is 12 Dunbar Road. There's an approved three-bedroom septic plan on file for construction. In addition, the proposed garage meets the required Board of Health setback. However, please note the structure is not to be used as habitable space." We have a September 13th memo from the Conservation Commission. The Commission held a hearing on August 27th and continued it to September 10th for this property. The applicant filed a notice of intent for the work in the buffer zone, including a new septic system, single-family residence, deep well, stairs, deck, and dock. An order of conditions was issued for all the work proposed. The Commission required a revision of the plan to reflect the details for the replacement stairway and also extending the hay bale line. And we have a September 16th memo from the Planning Board at their Thursday, September 12th meeting. The Planning Board reviewed the above-referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board makes the following recommendations. Proper public access and roadway should not be impeded in any way, and for clarification purposes, the lot coverage should be verified." I think they stumbled over the same thing we did for a while. We couldn't find, on the plan, we couldn't find the square footage, and then one of the sharp-eyed people over here said, "It's over here on the side." But, in any event...
I do have a couple copies of the plan with those minor revisions from the Conservation Commission.
I have to, I have to state, my opinion is that that is a very big house for a small lot. And because it's big and because you're adding a garage, you need more approvals and more waivers and relief from the bylaws than you would've if you'd simply rebuilt on the existing foundation, which a lot of people do do. But again, I'm only one person here. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak for or against or about this?
I'd speak for it. I'm the butter to both pieces of property that puts their property, 6 Dunbar, 8 Dunbar, 10 Dunbar, and 179 County, which is the cranberry bog. What they're doing is great. The house has been empty for 10, 15 years, falling far. The house, if you wanna talk about big houses, the house directly across the street is probably just as big as they're gonna build, and it's on even a smaller lot.
Did we get his name for, your name's?
Michael Wannan. W-A-N-A-N.
Thank you. Comments from my members, please?
I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm also a resident. I do know how to buy, and I don't know these people. I think this is gentleman, I am an architectural engineer. I've been living here for 28 years. I knew the previous resident there, and it's really an intimate little neighborhood. You are correct, that's a small lot. I am not adverse to removing the Darylite home, but it's almost something you have to see. Now, my only concern is during the phases of construction, that is like, you know, it's a dead end. I don't know how they plan to have the construction vehicles. We learned our lesson with the McMansion that went down the street, and now they have tenants, so that sometimes there's 22 cars down there.
Are those the bigger houses down the street from under, about five of them?
Yeah, well, I don't know about five. Well, you know, a lot of tenants, they're residents that live inside.
I just know that it's a big, big, big...
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's a zoo. So I am directly impacted. I'm five Dunbar. You, I'm a little red-white gingerbread house. Now, I know big trucks sometime come to make deliveries. They can't get out. It's so small and so intimate. Now, I think that is, being an architect, that is a very reasonable thing to do, is build, don't build to the limits of the site. Try to stay within the, everybody has a grand idea, and I see that all the time. You have to reduce what they, what they planned because of the limitations of the site. But with that being said, you have to think of the logistics of how these triaxal trucks that came in for those other projects that destroyed the road, the contour of the road, or the timeliness of the construction itself, and how are they gonna get in and out? There's only one way to get in there. Truck will either have to back up from the bottom of the hill so they can go forward, back, coming back with all of the debris of raising the house. Now, I think it's your, your brother or your built house. He admitted to me that they raised that old house on a Sunday morning at 6:00 in the morning. So those are the concerns, but...
Are you talking about delivery trucks for the construction process?
Oh, the removal of, they're gonna raise the house, yeah, and so stuff like that. But this is how tiny it is. I don't see you talking about emergency vehicles. This is, I call it a toy neighborhood, the roads are...
The only thing I can say is there won't be a Sunday morning.
Well, no, that's what...
He's retired fireman, he did it himself, and just saying, like, different, we...
But we've heard SARS at 4:30 in the morning. He had the neighbor helping him, but that's, noise isn't the problem.
Because the guy has a lot, the key's in, he felt like this is...
Yeah, I know, I know.
And promises.
If I might.
Got it.
The issue of the noise at 4:30 in the morning, the issue of the trucks, is, it's valid, but it wouldn't be a consideration for what we do with this petition.
Well, what I'm seeing is the logistics of the site. We're talking about the site.
If they, if they were, if they were to tear down the existing house and build one exactly the same size on the same footprint, you'd still have noise and trucks and building and construction.
Oh, I know, I know. But what I'm saying to you is almost, when I see that plan, and I say, "Wow," because I know these, my boat there with Ned, and I know how small it is. It really is to the limits of the site, and God bless you for trying that. But it's really in there, especially with the triangle is in Dunbar Road. You say that Dunbar Road, after you meet, it's still, what do you call it, an easement until it begins, but not after that? Okay. I'm just concerned about, and then when you go around the other side, like you were saying, it turns 90 degrees, so big trucks, not only can't they take the right to get out of the construction site, they can't go around that other way because of that 90-degree turn. So it really is constricted, and as far as the site, like I said, something you gotta really see the size of the site, and I think, like I said, do the most you can with what you got, but it's something you have to see. I think you're on the right. You have the right idea. It's a big house for a small, tiny, little spot, little spot. I mean, your blood is on that one.
Was there any consideration made to incorporate the garage into the actual design of the house?
No, I think there was some thought on that earlier, but...
Would you be open to that?
I didn't wanna go down either. I didn't wanna ruin the, honestly, I want it to be as natural as possible. I know you're all thinking I'm crazy because it's a big house, but honestly, I want it to look like it grew out of the ground. I wanna keep my trees pretty natural. I don't want any concrete in my house. There's a house, three houses down, that's all pink concrete. I live in the city, I don't want any concrete. I want all natural. I want it peaceful. I want it to look pleasant. I thought about that, but they have to totally disturb the earth more than, more than putting a big house on it. I mean, I can chuck off the second floor and make it less per foot, to what end?
Well, in reality, our role is to, our job is to look at the plan you're presenting with regard to the bylaws, and the issue really is, for us really, is the intrusion into the setback and, in my opinion, the amount of coverage on the lot. Because I think you have it at 25.1%, but I think if we did the calculations properly, it's more than that because we're supposed to include driveways, roads, parking lots. And I don't think your calculations include that. I would really encourage you to take another look at the plans you have and see if you can reduce some of these things and eliminate some of the impervious coverage to get a lot closer to the bylaws, 25, maximum 25% coverage.
Both. Two primary structures on the same lot are concerned to me, and most importantly, the garage and its proximity to the road. My major concern is the butters, and their access in their frontage. I mean, how do they get into their property if you're gonna build a building three feet off that road? I don't see it. And is that a public way? Does it have to be maintained? Is the association required to maintain that?
There are trees that's closer to that, or closer than the road.
I understand trees, that's, you know, have to be pruned, but not a structure.
Also a power pole. I'm right in the action. So, you know, the answer on that is a prescriptive easement. So, you know, the answer on that is a prescriptive easement. Not a lawyer, but, you know, if you were to take that, and we don't want to upset any neighbors, but it would not affect anyone from being able to get access to their property. I think you could, you can make the case that you could close that off and people could still have access to their property by going up and around Dunbar Road. So you'd cause no harm to anyone by closing that piece off and tearing up that, like, granite, that gravel that's there. And I don't want to do that. I think that the neighborhood has what it has and the neighborhood likes what it likes. And all we're talking about is building a new house. Some people don't like big houses. They're expensive. They're expensive to maintain. And so I understand that. But we're stuck with something that is historic, which is these right ways that are kind of just there and we have no control over it. And would be penalized by somebody laid that gravel down and laid down that hardtop and nobody who owned that land ever authorized that. It just happened.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the House Counsel's opinion on prescriptive easement and the frontage and the concerns legally that we might face with this.
Well, a prescriptive easement is a question of fact and it depends on the history of the property, how long it's been used, whether it was open and notorious over a certain period of time. So it's difficult to be able to say with any degree of certainty whether a prescriptive easement exists or doesn't exist without really delving into the facts and the pre-existing nature of the use of that roadway. However, if it were to be legally established that it was a prescriptive easement, then it would have to be maintained in a certain, to a certain degree for the benefit of the people who have come to rely on it.
Thank you.
This is, however, I believe, a private road. It's not, it's not.
I don't think anybody knows what it is.
Even if it's a private road and it's been used by the public, it's still considered a public road. It might not be an accepted street, but it's still a public way.
Yes.
The public can drive over it.
This one, similar to the ones all through Chocho, sure is, are still private roads. I think the question was whether or not it was a public way, I think, earlier.
Well, I think that your calculation for impervious coverage should exclude the area of those roads from what you consider to be the total lot area. The calculation, then of course, the 25%, then becomes 35% or 40% becomes high. Before we go any further, sir, you wanted to say something?
Yeah. As far as them being able to get to their property, they have permission to go through a bog to get to their property with trucks.
Thank you.
That would allow passage from this direction.
Thank you. Again, I speak for myself only as a board member, not for the board in total. I think the lot's being overbuilt and I'm concerned about this percent coverage issue.
Don, if I may?
Yeah.
My concern besides the size of the house is they've got this loft up on the third floor, which I do not think is a good idea because that can definitely turn into a bunk room. And the size of the second floor and the garage is just way too huge. That's just so big.
Chairman? In light of the comments that we're hearing from you and the board members, we'd like to request a continuance to your next meeting and make some changes.
I think it would be a really good idea to look for ways to try and cut down on the size. I don't want to worry about the loft just now, David. I think we need to worry about the things in the bylaw, which is the coverage. And I'm okay with the setback issues, but the coverage issue bothers me.
Now, if we, if we, if, just so we look at the calculations correctly, if we're allowed to take this prescriptive easement area out of the lot area, can we also then deduct it or not have to include it in the impervious area? Now, let's take it out and just consider it like it was a roadway running through there. We'll reduce the 11,700 square feet by that amount, but also, so that'll reduce what we're taking our 25% on, but it would also not count against our impervious area.
Can you break down buildings and impervious areas?
Yes, we can do that.
You look at the percentages of it?
Yes.
And then, again, my major concern is the two primary structures on the lot. The second floor on this garage.
It is an accessory structure.
It's an accessory structure, but, you know, if you're gonna make it habitable or it's gonna be.
No water supply. No water supply. It'd be heated because.
Condition space.
An artist loft, so it would be heated, but it doesn't have.
In my experience, I've seen these turn into habitable dwellings very easily. So I have a major concern in the proximity of the road. I think all those need to be addressed. And do we need to do a title search on this prescriptive easement or how do we do that?
Well, the title search wouldn't establish whether it was prescriptive or not because it's, it's really the factual circumstances surrounding its use over a particular period of time. So there would, nothing would show up in the title if it was in fact prescriptive.
All right. So can we get a letter from the butters that use those easements?
I don't think we're gonna be going knocking on doors asking. I mean, this house.
I mean, this is their access to their house. I think they should have the way in. I think we should be hearing from them.
We're not doing anything to try to prevent them from getting in there. This house goes back to 1940. So I think, is it 20 years on prescriptive easement, similar to adverse possession?
Yes.
So I think we can establish there's been at least 20 years of use over this and it's open and notorious. It hasn't been concealed from anyone. It's been accepted by the owners of this lot and it's accepted by the new owners. So they're not, they're not challenging anyone's right to travel over there.
No. Sir, here's what I would do. I would perform your calculation on the percent coverage by using the footprint of the proposed house, the footprint of the proposed garage, the stairs, the deck, and any driveway that you're gonna, and parking area that you're gonna keep as, that belongs to.
For their use.
To the, to the use of this property.
Okay.
And then the square footage of the property would be the 11,760 minus the area of those two roads across that Dunbar existing, the two minutes driveway, I think you have.
Yes.
So the area.
Talking this one here. This one would be used by the owners.
On this side.
If it's used by the owner, then that, then that, then that should be, that should be included in the impervious coverage and can also remain in the.
Lot area.
The lot area.
Okay.
But I think the lot area is now diminished by the, what we call a quasi-public way.
I think that's a fair way to look at it.
Do you also have to make, you also.
Yeah, combining the two buildings, gravity.
One structure. And one of the issues on combined septic. I see septic. And if you look at this, this is a busy plan because there's so many wells clustered in around here. The only place, there can be places right there. If you see all the, all the well arcs coming in.
Are you out of the 100-foot buffer right?
Yes, I'm out. The 100-foot buffer is here. All right. But again, adding something in this direction just can't be done because we start intruding on existing wells up in this, up in this area here.
Can't slide that main building forward towards the lake? Are you into the frontage on that as well?
The hillside is so close here.
The hill?
Yeah.
It's like steep.
It's a very steep. I think it's the highest peak of the lake.
Okay.
It's, it's well over 20 feet above pond level.
And then you want to dig down and disturb the side. I don't want.
Yeah, go from 30 feet.
Gotcha.
You've, you've heard discussion and concerns and issues and questions and I hope you have a running inventory and a list of those. You can always watch it on cable TV if you want to have a playback.
Okay. I hate watching myself on cable.
But you live in Rochester, right?
That's true. I won't be subject to it. Yeah. I have to intrude on someone else.
I think, actually, I think you can get it on Verizon. I think Kerry is the Lakeville Cable.
Kerry everybody.
You've asked for a continuance while you go back and re-engineer and redesign and reconsider how you might do things and also recalculate things. Would somebody care to make a motion to grant their request for continuance?
I'll make the motion.
Joe has made a motion and who's second? Chris is second at the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please.
Aye.
So.
October 17th.
October 17th. The smart person here says.
17th.
Thank you. And before you want to leave, can I have your card? Do you have a card? Well, it's on your website.
Yes, sir.
Right.
I was wondering why I had to.
Okay, it is, according to my watch, it's 7:45. Let's open our next hearing. Somebody here to represent the Davis hearing? The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Match on Ross Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, September 19th at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Prieston Street, upon the petition of Jeffrey and Kelly Davis. A special permit under 61 and 74 is requested to raise a pre-existing non-performing dwelling and construct a new dwelling that would be within the front and rear setbacks and also construct a 24 by 26 foot detached garage that would be within the setbacks on a non-performing lot as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property's site is 113 Nelson's Grove Road. And we have a memo from Niall Zager at Zenith Consulting dated September 10th. Dear members of the board, I'm writing on behalf of our client to request the petition, request that, the petition for hearing with the zoning board of appeals for 113 Nelson's Grove Road be withdrawn without prejudice. Is there a motion to accept the request for withdrawal without prejudice?
So made.
Second. Made, made for seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries finally. 7:46.
I'm impressed that you're.
The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Match on Ross Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, September 19th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Prieston Street, upon the petition of Monroe Associates LLC. A special permit under 746 is requested to cite an adult-use marijuana retailer at 310 Kenneth W. Welch Drive as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property is owned by CSS ILLC. Who is CSS ILLC?
That's Cold Storage Solutions.
Ah, good. Thank you. So you're on.
Thank you. So my name is Mike Patello. I represent Monroe Associates LLC. Today I am here with Mitch Suzanne. He's from ECM Security, who will be handling the security for the dispensary. So I'm not sure exactly how this process works. I can give you guys a quick update about who we are, what processes we've gone through so far with the town, and, you know, field any questions or if you guys want to ask questions first, I can, you know, do whichever you like.
I think, I certainly, an overview would be very helpful for us.
Okay.
We're equally unsure of how the process works. It's, you're the first one doing this here with us. So that's why we have somebody here to help us, make sure we don't step in a lot of potholes. I also would, would like you to.
Yeah, that's pretty funny.
What's that?
Pretty much whole.
You don't like my humor?
Smoked that one right in there, didn't you?
I smoked it. I would like you to go through your application. Your narrative very nicely lists each of the issues that I think we have to be concerned about and you can quickly address each of them so it's on the record.
Okay.
You're on.
All right. So let me give you a quick update about, you know, how we got to where we are today. So just quickly, on April 2nd of this year, the town of Lakeville awarded us with a host community agreement, which basically allows us to, you know, move forward the process of.
Let me close the door so I can hear you. I'm probably the only one with bad hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, John. I'm sorry for the interruption.
So on April 2nd of this year, Monroe Associates was awarded the host community agreement to open up a recreational marijuana dispensary in town. From there, the next significant date was June 4th. June 4th, we applied with the Cannabis Control Commission. All right. So essentially, that's our application with the state.
Thank you, John.
So although we are Monroe Associates, we did file for a DBA. So when we do open the dispensary, it'll be called the Vault, V A U L T. Okay. So in some other renderings, which I don't have here, but you have it in your packet, you'll see a sign on the front called the Vault. Okay. So as we started this special permit application, one of the, and one of the things that needed to take place was the planning board needed to review the site plan. And I think that was because, you know, originally, the planning board was the special permit granting authority for marijuana use and that transitioned to you guys, I think, with the last time meeting. So I met with the planning board twice to review the site plan. And I think they may have had a few comments about the traffic impact study. I'm not sure if you have a memo with that or whatever. On September 4th, I met with the Board of Health. Again, kind of gave a brief overview of where we are. There weren't really any questions or concerns. Again, I assume they wrote a letter. I'm not sure. On September 5th, I met with the Police Department, Fire Department and the Town Administrator. Again, just basically getting them up to speed as to where we are and what we were doing. So that brings us to where we are today. Obviously, in the packet, you have a site plan, a floor plan, a rendering of what the front of the elevation will look like. And again, what I can do is I'll go through everything I have here. Then I will go through the application, take, you know, one article at a time. And if you have questions, you know, we can kind of address that as we go. So a lot of times where cities and towns have questions, it revolves around security of the facility and, you know, the people and then also the parking, you know, because we know that when the first couple marijuana establishments opened in the state, traffic was an absolute nightmare. Okay. So let me talk about that a little bit. So like I mentioned, we got Mitch Suzanne representing ECM Security. He's going to be handling our security for the facility. Mitch is a retired police officer and I'm going to speak for him now, but any questions you have, please direct towards him. So he's retired, now a police officer. They, he has been protecting essentially marijuana establishments throughout the state, so he's familiar with it. All the employees that he has on his staff are law enforcement, corrections officers, military, fire. Am I covering it all? Okay. And usually what he will do is he will hire people in the local area to serve that establishment. So he doesn't have a group that is traveling far. Usually he hires local people around here to basically staff whichever facility that is. We will have two guards on duty at all times. I believe it's half an hour, an hour prior to opening and also half an hour, an hour after closing. The reason we'll have two is we'll always have somebody monitoring the cameras as well as somebody that's like roving either throughout the dispensary or the parking lot, just to basically, you know, make sure everything's moving along. They're also responsible for maintaining all the visitor logs, not necessarily the customers, but visitors that come in, as well as verifying all the security systems are, you know, operational, cameras, intrusion alarms, all the other stuff. And again, what they're doing is they're watching employees and customers, making sure that, you know, traffic is flowing properly and that essentially there's no theft going on or, or, you know, anything that's technically not right as far as the CCC is concerned. And again, one of the things that, that is quite clear, even though he will have law enforcement people working for him, any issues that arise, we absolutely notify, you know, the Lakeville Police Department when there's anything suspicious. So the other deal is parking. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the, with the site, but there is a circular parking lot in the front. This parking lot will be servicing our dispensary. All the other parking lot on site or all the other parking spaces on site are for the other businesses within that building. We will not, our employees will not be parking there. So that'll be for customers only. Our employees will be parking up the street where we're leasing some spaces from one of the other. of the other cold storage solution buildings. And we will have a, one of our employees will essentially shuttle the employees back and forth. So no one will be walking up and down Kenneth Welch Drive.
How many spaces are you providing?
So, there's 20 spaces there.
20 spaces?
Yes.
And how large is the retail area?
Twenty, I believe it's 2,700.
Does that comply with the zoning parking regulations and the bylaws? Have you done those numbers?
It hasn't come up yet, so I assume we're safe with that. So, one of the things that we look at is, you know, 20 spaces for a retail store, you know, is that enough? So, when we do the calculations, it's a well-known fact that, on average, a customer will spend 15 minutes from the time they pull into the parking place, go into the dispensary, come out, and drive away. If you look at that at a peak time, right, that, that, those 20 parking spaces theoretically, of course, will service about 80, 80 cars coming into the dispensary.
Where'd you get the data for that, 15 minutes?
So, if you look in the traffic impact study, it does relate to that, or it does mention the 15 minutes, but it's one of those, granted, there's not a lot of standardized industry numbers like this, but that is one that is a pretty well-known fact.
Was this the problem that the planning board had? You mentioned there was a planning board concern about the parking study, or the traffic study?
They, there was some, I don't want to say confusion, but there was a little bit of a misunderstanding about the wordage, about the verbiage, wording, in the traffic impact study. And I, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but...
I know that was it.
Yeah, it was, you know...
Was one trip in, was it one in and one out?
Yeah, so the, the trip ends, if you read that, which is pretty exciting stuff, the, it mentions a trip end, right? And essentially, a trip end is going there, another one is leaving. Okay? So for every customer visit, is essentially two trip ends. Okay?
That actually is explained in there somewhere in the fine print. I found it.
It is. That part, the trip ends, I could understand that perfectly well. There was some other language in there that I wasn't 100% sure on, but the, but the gist of it is, the traffic that's expected for this dispensary is not what we've seen when the first dispensary's opened, for a multitude of reasons. One, it's not as, it's not the only one in the state, right? By the time we open, there are going to be multiple ones in the area. There's one up the street in Middleborough that should be open in the next month or two. Right? So the, I guess the uniqueness of it is, that's kind of fallen by the wayside. Right? Now, granted, we would love to have, you know, lines out, not lines out the door, but we'd love to have a lot of people coming there. Now, if that's the case, we're releasing more spots for our employees. We're going to also be able to lease spots up there for customers, and we'll provide shuttle service back and forth.
Does the site offer any opportunity to expand the parking on-site?
So, that's one of the discussions that we need to have with the owner. He said he's completely open to that, but if you, and I think there may be a site plan that was done after this, where they're... The simple question is, we don't know if there's opportunities that would be for the dispensary to use. They are going to be putting some other businesses in there, where they're going to add parking at the other end, but that's for those businesses. Again, that's my understanding.
So you're reusing the existing cold storage buildings, and there's only the 20 spaces that are going to be available to your side of that warehouse? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, so the dispensary will have just what's in there right now. I want to have discussions with the owner about possibly putting something over here. But again, before we start doing that, I think the big thing we need to understand is, is that needed? So...
Well, that was my question to you earlier. Does this parking requirement line up with zoning bylaws for square footage, and how many spaces is required? I didn't have time to look it up, so...
That's right. The bylaw says, I'm looking at bylaw 6533, it's on page 24 of our new bylaw, for a commercial establishment serving the general public, and I think that's what this is. It says one space for each 300 square feet of gross floor area or fraction thereof, plus one space for each employee. That's what the bylaw says. Now, you said that the employees would not be permitted to park here, so you have another place for employees.
Correct.
So, we could, if that's, is truly the case, then we could, I think, consider the first part of this bylaw that says one per each 300 square feet of gross floor area or fraction thereof. And would you say it was 2,700 feet?
The overall spaces...
Yeah.
So...
That's the retail, but you have a growing facility on-site too? Just 2,700? So you just need the nice spaces.
Right. So Chris, it looks like, as John pointed out, it looks like it easily meets the bylaw requirements.
Thank you, John.
And for, we're going to have about 10 employees max per shift, right? It's retail, so we'll have people coming and going, but the, the most we anticipate being there at any one time is 10 people. All right? So...
Yeah, I think the shuttle concerns me, but if you're meeting, you know, you only need nine, and you have 10 employees, you still going to have room for handicap accessible ramps and parking? Is that part of that parking lot?
Yeah, I think those are, those are factored in.
Those are?
Handicap, yeah.
Yes.
It's, there's no need for ramps, it's pretty, pretty flat.
You need curb cuts for ADA, and they were existing, is what you're saying?
That I don't know. So, this circular driveway, there is just a first layer down there now. The sidewalk that would basically go across the front is not there. So that's to be put in. That is obviously...
Nate will deal with all that. Last permitting?
I need some help with something that must be, it's abundantly obvious, but to everyone but me. How many business names are associated with all the things going on here?
So, I can tell you...
Who is Nature's Remedy?
So Nature's Remedy, so Nature's Remedy is occupying this space.
Are they you?
They are not us. We are completely separate from them.
You have no connection whatsoever with Nature's Remedy?
We have, we have a wholesale agreement, which means we will buy a certain amount of our product from them.
Okay.
Okay.
But they're a totally separate business?
They're absolutely completely separate.
Common ownership?
What's that?
Any overlap of ownership?
No. The Monroe Brothers that I work for are investors in there, but their ownership is minimal.
Thank you.
So, I want to answer your question to the best of my knowledge. So there's, we're up front in the dispensary, Nature's Remedy is here, and, and one of the first site plans that I received, Northeast Alternatives, which is another cultivation facility, I believe has plans to go in there. Again, it has nothing to do with me, I just wanted to answer your question completely.
Thank you. That does clarify it.
Yeah. Beside, beyond that, I have no idea what else is in there. One other thing, like, you know, we mentioned is opening day, right, like we saw in Western Mass. What the CCC is kind of requiring everybody to do now, as well as the cities and towns, is come up with, they call it an opening day plan. All right? What's your plan day one? Because you don't know if you're going to have one customer or 2,000 customers. So, usually, for the first week or so, is appointment only. And also during that time, we will have extra security on staff. We will be working with the Lakeville Police Department to at least have a detail there, to make sure if anything arises, they can handle it. And then each day, or at the end of the week, we'll reassess what's necessary for the next week. So, that's kind of the plan, to make sure we mitigate any issues from, from the start.
Have other communities used similar plans for these kinds of things?
Absolutely.
And they worked?
Absolutely. Yeah. I'm not sure if...
Excuse me. Wherehead did it. After seeing what happened in Western Mass, Wherehead went to a reservation, appointment only, and it worked much better there. They did shuttles off-site. They're now away from that, and it's, it's gone back down to a regular, steady, but not like the crowd that you saw out west. As more recreational adults open, you're not seeing that huge influx. When the first two out west opened, they were the only two recreational adults open west of the Mississippi. So they had people coming from everywhere, driving there. You don't see that anymore, because more of them opened, and other states are starting now to have medicals, so it's not that huge crash.
It's not as much of a novelty.
Right. It's worn off.
So, I get, the other thing that I want to reiterate too is, you know, we're, we're a new business in town. The, our priority is to make sure we maintain good community relationships with everybody. So if there's anything that comes up, whether it's, you know, traffic-related, customer-related, whatever it is, you know, we're going to do everything we can to make sure we mitigate those problems immediately. And I would pretty much be the point of contact for, you know, anything that happens.
Will you be on-site as the business manager?
So, my position right now is president and general manager. We are actively pursuing three recreational dispensary licenses, Lakeville, Webster, and Worcester. So, I will be here as much as possible until we have all three of those open, then I will be basically roving between the three. There will be a dedicated manager and assistant manager that essentially will be here, just like any retail operation.
And have you hired from Lakeville?
We have not even begun hiring yet. Another thing I want to talk about is the timeline. Okay? And then you'll understand why we haven't hired yet. Okay? So, like I mentioned, we dropped the application in with the Cannabis Commission on June 4th. When we dropped that application in, you know, every, you can go on the CCC website, and it will show you every license that has been applied for, and what status they're in, right? Either application submitted, all the way up to, you know, ready to commence operations. You can see the dates that they filed, and essentially, you know how long it's taking them to get to the next step. So on June 4th, when we filed, it was averaging four to six months, just for the state to open the application, to look at it and say, yes, you're complete, or no, you're missing some documentation. Now, it's an average of six to eight months before they even open the application. So, that's only the first hurdle. Once they open the application, if it's deemed complete, which we hope our applications are fairly complete, you need to go for provisional license, and then there are multiple architectural review, architectural review approval, multiple approval steps and inspections all the way along the line. That is roughly five to six months of inspections. Okay? So if you look at June 4th, let's just say it's six months, right, that puts you at December 4th, and then you're probably five months, you know, further out before you're actually opening your door. Okay? So, I wish I was ready to start hiring, because we'd be that much closer, but unfortunately, it's, it's going to get pushed off. And one of the, one of the things that we want to do is not only hire in the local area, right, but because the CCC has some kind of regulations or stipulations where there's preferential hiring for, and I, I'm sorry if, the name of this escapes me, but for people that have been adversely affected by essentially, you know, the illegal drugs or whatever. So if there are family members or something that has, you know, somebody in the family that was a drug addict, or, you know, basically in trouble with the law for drugs, there's some preferential hiring for that. That kind of sums up about five pages of the regulations. So...
Do you anticipate peak sale times, Saturdays, Friday nights, anything like that? Are you going to be able to compensate for that?
Friday, Saturday are like the, the peak times, and we'll have more staff on hand for that. Actually, I think it starts Thursday night, Friday and Saturday. But yes, we'll figure out the staffing to accommodate that.
Whenever people get paid.
Yeah.
What kind of vetting do you do on your employees before they hire them?
So, and Mitch, please speak up. They have to go through a background check, right, initially, and...
When you hire someone who will work at a dispensary, then you have to submit a background check to the state, and they have to pass that background check before they get a, right now for medical for a, to work at a dispensary. It's going to be the same thing for adult recreations. They go for a very extensive background, and you have to apply to the state to get a, a card to work at any dispensary. Likewise, I hire mostly ex-law enforcement and military or off-duty firefighters. I know they have great background, but they, I still, I still run a background check on, that goes to the state. They have to be approved by the state background check to get a DPH guard to work, CCC guard now, to work at any dispensary cultivation site. So it's very extensive, extensive background check.
And what are the fees for the, what are the fees for the background check?
Fees? It is usually by the companies. It's 500 bucks per, per employee.
So, we'll vet the, you know, our hires pretty well, because we don't want to hire somebody, spend $500 on them, and find out they don't work out. And again, we want to make sure we're, you know, maintaining good relationships with the community. We obviously want to make sure we have good employees, so we get the customers coming back, so...
What regulations will apply, what will your regulations be for issues around firearms?
So...
Some people in the state are licensed to carry.
Right now, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, the CCC, the only place they mention firearms is if you're actually a transporter. So if you're delivering, you know, like if I had to deliver something from one dispensary to another, there, first of all, it's got to be in a secure van with, you know, GPS systems and all that. They require that you do not carry firearms if you're in that van. Prior to that, there is no mention of firearms either in the dispensaries, the cultivation facilities, or security guards carrying or not carrying. We, one of the questions we always ask the police chief is, do you have a preference either way, whether the guard should be armed or not? And I think the answer is, I don't think they have a preference. Right? Now, again, I don't want to speak out of turn, but...
He didn't, he said, I really don't have a preference either way, when we spoke with the chief. It's kind of ironic that people who work for armed guard service are armed, but yet the state has mandated that no one making deliveries from a cultivation is be armed. And they're, they're delivering, a lot of my sites go out every day with a half a million or more worth of product, and it's just two young kids driving it and going off. And I've worked very hard to teach them how to look for a tail, make sure you're not always sticking in the same route when you leave and, and stuff, and it's, it's pretty, pretty scary to watch.
Will you or your security people be armed?
That is a work in progress with, with Mike. We do have armed security. It is mostly, it is mostly my, right now, my retired law enforcement people. I still have them go through extensive training and qualifications. It's, it mimics what the state does, but I can't say that we, we qualify them to the state level. I have a six-hour instructor that I work with to train all my ex-law enforcement to be armed security. We do, also do executive protection in places where we need armed security.
So with the co-ownership, and I guess you anticipate purchasing most of your product right next door at Nature's Remedy, is my understanding?
It's a failure, yeah.
And how is that transfer going to be done? Is that a shared potty wall, or is that going to be regulated, or how is that going, how's that going to be done?
So essentially...
In or out of the building?
So, currently, there is a shared wall, and there's a door there, right? So they could come into our dispensary. The CCC basically doesn't want that. They want to make sure it's completely separate. So essentially, they're going to take a hand truck, come out their back door, either come in through our employee entrance, or, or right through the front door.
So is that going to be a secure entrance? Is that going to be, you have screening? Is it, you're going to have armed guy? How is that system going to work?
That, that'll be, there'll be multiple people, you know, it's only 100, not even 100 feet.
That would be a work in progress. I would be working with the chief on how we're going to, how we would do that.
I think you should work that out before we, I'd like to see that worked out.
So, so the other thing too is the CCC weighs in on that.
Yeah.
Right? And, but we will not get to that point with them.
Until you have this.
Until probably a month or two before we're ready to open.
Okay. Okay.
So, you know, obviously, we can come up with a plan and we can discuss that with the chief, see how he wants to handle it, but essentially, the CCC provides the guidelines on that. So I've covered everything in my little presentation. I'm not sure if there are any general questions before I get into the application.
Let's go into the application. Well, I don't, okay. Does anyone have any further questions? So where are you starting, Mike?
I don't know if I'll, I don't want to talk to you right now.
Starting with part 2F, I think. We're on the same page.
I'm sorry, where, where would you like me to start?
I was, I was guessing out loud that you would be at section 2, part F. It says the zoning board appeals may impose conditions. Well, maybe we could, should back up to compliance.
So right after opening day, where it says compliance, it's section 7.4.6.
Right.
Okay. So, the section is 7.4.6, adult use manufacturer, marijuana establishment and marijuana retailer, applicable sections B, D, E, and F, 1 through 6. So the first one, marijuana use shall not be located within 500 feet of a public or private school. Obviously, the way the industrial park is owned, we're safe with that. Marijuana use should be located in a permanent building, non-mobile facility, with the exception of transporter or marijuana transport license. Again...
You satisfy that one?
Yep. That building's not going anywhere. Application should include the following detailed floor plan for the proposed marijuana use for the, and square footage available functional areas. That's what you see here. It's also included in your packet. Detailed site plans including the following, compliance with parking and loading spaces for lot size, frontage, yards, heights, coverage of buildings. Do you want me to read through all this or do you want me to just...
I think we should, I think it'd be good to go through it. It's instructive for us. It's helpful for us.
Sure.
And I think part A, 2A, I think we've agreed, you meet the parking requirement.
Okay. And so part B, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement on the site to provide secure and safe access and egress to and from the site. So, like we talked about, we're going to have somebody out in the parking lot. And if it's busy, not only are we going to have a security guard, we're also going to have a, an employee out there essentially directing traffic in the parking lot. So managing who's coming in and out.
So you have only the use of that one circular parking lot in the, in the front? Is that my understanding?
Part, yes.
So you don't think that the one entrance, the one queue from the street adjacent to the other queue is going to create a problem as people are backing in and out? I think it's, I think it's tight in there.
First of all, I don't know the answer to that. What I do know is when we, when we do the lines, it's going to be obviously, you know, going in one direction, right? So that should help mitigate some of the issue.
Is there a way to do a second curb cut and maybe have more of a U-shaped style driveway to eliminate the queue problem and people backing in and out?
So the, the thing that I don't know is, at, at some point, somebody had to get approval to put that circular parking lot in there as opposed to...
It is, it's existing or...
That is there now.
Okay.
Put together.
No.
Thanks. That park, that circular parking lot's there now?
It is. It's a, just a first coat, as far as I was aware.
Must be new.
So it was already installed, it just installed?
I got involved back in December. It was there in December.
Did that get through the site plan approval from the planning board prior to its installation?
That was prior to...
You don't know?
Me getting involved.
Okay.
That was either Nature's Remedy or Cold Storage that did that.
Nice.
So your point is it exists and it satisfies the parking. I think Chris was raising a concern that it's a, a bit of a cumbersome shape for a parking lot.
I agree. I would imagine there's a reason they did a circular one versus, you know, square or rectangular, and I'm not, no idea.
I wasn't, it wasn't that much, you...
No.
So you were going with this, from a small town too, and I was like, thinking the same thing you're going, how did it...
Yeah.
Before we got involved, it was there.
It must be new because if you look at the satellite view on Google Maps, it's, it's all lawn, there's nothing, there's no parking lot there.
Yeah. Like I said, I first toured that facility back in December. It was definitely there then.
It's been in there about a year.
About a year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The pocket spaces that were moved to were at least discussed on the planning board, I mean, right before the planning board, which was not this group, it was John Brady with the Monroe Brothers. The idea was that the majority of the circular park would have been handicap spaces for people that had medical needs. There were to be, I believe, 71 total parking spaces, which went down the side of the building. So my question would be, where do they go to between the planning board and the zoning board? There was 20 spaces, clearly, we'll get into licensing, but 20 spaces is not enough. There was 71 spaces talked about earlier with the planning board. And that had nothing to do with Northeast Alternatives taking the other end of the building. This went down along the side of the building by the cogeneration plan, which you really enter into from the next driveway. And that's where some of your employees park. Not your employees because it's Nature's Remedies employees. So when Nature's Remedy and the Monroe Brothers came, there was something in the parking spaces. So I want to eventually come back to where do they go? Not necessarily now because you're in the process. The circular driveway was laid down just prior to the winter. So they could get a base coat down so they wouldn't be driving in the bus.
So just about a year, a little less than a year ago.
Yeah. Right. But that would not be nearly enough parking spaces. For those that are interested, you can go to the Wayham facility, which obviously went away from Waterways, Shuttle buses, because once the novelty wore on, they parked basically across the street from the marijuana place, which is near the Toby Hospital. So if you're ever interested in how many cars go there, you can go there. But the best place to go to was Northeast Alternatives, which is in Fall River, right on Route 81. Basically, it's a weekend business. It starts Thursday night, but it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday afternoon. So Saturday and Sunday afternoon are really the big movers. The rest of the week, there are no lines. 20 spaces is more than enough, but it's a weekend business. So...
I agree with you.
If you're interested, you can look at the age of the people going in there and the number of parking spaces you need. So not to go, go through the process, but my question is, where did the 71 parking spaces disappear?
So I'm going to do my best to explain what you're talking about. Originally, Northeast Alternatives had the cultivation facility and they were going to open their own dispensary out front. For whatever reason, I'm not quite sure, is they wanted to concentrate on the cultivation and they basically offered the dispensary to the Monroe Brothers. Part of the lease that we have is those spaces there. So all the additional spaces that, that he's speaking about is essentially employee parking, which I, I want to say they anticipate at full staffing to be about 50. Right? So that's kind of where the 70 number came from somewhere, that all this parking here would be Northeast Alternatives.
I just have a problem with the shuttle and I, I know I would avoid a shuttle at all costs. I'd be parking in that parking lot.
So, and you're right, because if I have an option of, you know, coming here, taking a shuttle and dealing with that nonsense, I'm going somewhere else.
Yeah.
Right? That's why, you know, prior to us opening, we need to understand what, what options there are to add more parking there. But again, we're not, we're not, I'm not ready to explain to you guys, hey, we're definitely going to put another 30 spaces there. I haven't had that conversation yet. And, and again, Northeast Alternatives, they are right on the Rhode Island border. It's, I don't even know if it's 100 feet, right? So they got all the people coming from not only Rhode Island, but up from Connecticut, New York, and then the whole Fall River area. When, like I said, by the time we open, the place in Middleboro, which is probably four miles away, they should be open. All right? So again, I don't think we're going to, I would love to see that kind of traffic, but I don't think that's going to happen.
My suggestion would be is those Nature's Remedy employees park in another Cold Storage building and you open that side to the public. I would not go anywhere with 20 parking spaces, in my opinion. And I'm a supporter of the facility. Your number one supporter, but 71 parking spaces disappeared. You need to get those back.
Chair, if I have a couple of questions, if I could. How many handicap spaces are part of that 20 in the circular?
Um, there's two.
And is that egress like wide enough for cars, two cars going in and out at the same time?
Yes.
Trey, if you look at the map, Jerry, real close.
Yep.
If you have it, it has to be out, it's enough.
You can see two spots kind of at the 1 o'clock and 1:30 position on the... That's the, I gotta find it. It's the second.
Mr. Chairman's on it.
Okay. Thanks. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Dick Nichols and I am at the business across the street at 305. And what John is speaking about, this is one of the issues that I had when I first saw that. And if you look at all along here, where it says HVAC equipment and generators, that was all parking spaces. And I was saying, there can't be parking spaces because they have all this other stuff in there. But they still had it on their plan with all of that showing the parking spaces, probably just so they could get through the permitting process. These five spaces here are new as well.
I'm sorry, John, what was that about, the five spaces?
They had parking spaces, I think there's probably, I think there's like 25 parking spaces that they had along here, right alongside the building where it says HVAC equipment.
Yeah, I heard that, but you were talking about the ones by words, marked E?
Yeah.
Shows five.
Yeah, those, those are fairly new also. Those actually are newer than the, our round area.
And they exist. And who are those for?
I don't know. I just view it from a...
It's really, wherever you go, 20 parking spaces is not enough.
I agree.
You need to get more parking spaces and put the employees down the street. And I wouldn't go with...
But even the employees aren't going to use the shuttle. They're going to cheat and park in, in the side lot and in the front, everywhere else.
Not the employees, not the business. Okay. Just my comment.
Cheat, I agree.
I'm not sure that's in the idea.
They have to figure it out in your front.
But at the same time, there are trucks that come down and, and to this loading dock back here and there's just very little room for trucks to go through.
You've got to have more parking spaces than you have floor area in the dispensary, the sales area.
The dispensary, the dispensary of 20 parking spaces is not nearly enough. Go by any facility, whether it's Wayham or it's Northeast Alternatives, they need more than 20 parking spaces. So however you can get them back, you need to get them back. Two different companies, Northeast Alternatives is one, Nature's Remedy is another, and Monroe Brothers.
You think you'd be able to secure more parking spaces from Nature's Remedy?
I don't want to say that. I don't know. What I, what I do know is, you know, part of our lease, we have the parking up front. I have, so we have a sublease with Nature's Remedy, right? Because they have that whole space, so we're subleasing our space from them. I have requested a meeting with the building owner to see what options we have there. But again, I'm, I, I'm not ready to say that we have something yet.
Right. I don't want to get bogged down in the parking, but 20 spaces isn't enough.
We can return to that. Would you recommend that we hold off on our consideration of a special permit until they resolve your issue?
I've come up with a number that they need to come up with. 20 spaces isn't enough by anybody's standard, whether it be Wayham, whether it be Northeast Alternatives and Fall River. You go by those places all the time.
The...
Obviously, a lot of those 25 at both facilities. It's a weekend business.
Yeah. And I wish I could tell you, we need 36. I don't know.
Well, he hopes that they need more parking.
Absolutely.
Don't you have those numbers?
Cold Storage has, yeah. Cold Storage has plenty of, plenty of spaces to put your employees and everyone else's employees down. So let's see what else you have besides parking.
So the, so the best history, if you look in the traffic study, it talks about states that have, you know, been open for a couple of years. So references Colorado, right? Around here, we're, we're not open, you know, there aren't enough of dispensaries open.
I agree with you. In a year, the parking might not be an issue, but you always design worst-case scenario. So wintertime, people pulling in and out of that. I have a real problem with that circular driveway and people entering and exiting in queues and, and I agree with John, you need more spaces. That's a poor design. I'm sorry to say.
I can tell you, we're trying to pursue negotiations.
All right. Okay. Let's move along. You were coming up on item C here.
Okay. Of course, I didn't save the page, so bear with me. Convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement off the site if vehicular and pedestrian traffic off-site can be reasonably expected, be substantially affected by on-site changes. We don't plan on letting anyone walk to and from. Obviously, it's an industrial park. It's not like it's downtown Boston or, or anything like that. Our employees that park off-site will get shuttled. You know, if there is, again, this is where we probably need to, to speak with the police department more about what the opening day process is. If people show up, you know, we turn them away, we want to make sure that they're not driving through the neighborhoods or something to that effect. So we need to have discussions about that.
I think, I think this also goes along with what Chris was saying. I, I, I think the issue of literally the difficulty of backing out of that odd parking lot and navigating through the parking lot is covered in item C.
It was never intended for the handicap I. Lost two extra spaces. But that's all it was for. The parking was along the side of the building. There is no off-street parking within the industrial park at all. So even though there is no off-street, on-street parking, if you will, where people park along the side of the road, if you've got a carnival or something like that, in the first couple of weeks, we'll be a carnival atmosphere. But there is no off-street parking. So you have to have a better plan than 25.
But let me suggest, as we go through all this, that there, there are going to be a number of issues that come up that give us pause. And maybe even you privately give you pause, like the design of the parking lot and the number of parking spaces and so forth. We might check these, we might put a tick mark beside these and suggest that we continue this hearing and you guys go off and do some homework and come back with so, an update to your plans that address the concerns we raise, if, if that would be all right with you. I think there, I mean, you'd love to go...
Do I have an option? But, no, I, yeah.
I always like to give the petitioner a chance to buy into what we're saying.
Your concerns are completely valid. I have those same concerns, right? Because as someone that's running a retail establishment, I want to make sure that the customers can easily get there and easily go.
Can part of your plans be to basically redo that circular park lot, parking lot? Or is that fixed?
I'm not the property owner, so that's one hurdle, right? So I think we need to have meetings with the property owner as well as Nature's Remedy to figure out like a, a kind of whole site type plan, right? But again, I've reached out, I'm waiting for that meeting to happen.
So let's go through this and as we discuss things, we can make a list of the issues of concern, areas of concern that, that you can then go home and dig into and...
Okay. That's reasonable.
Keep going. Let's keep going.
And you know what? I apologize because I don't have exhibit D, which a lot of the answers to this are in here. My exhibit D is a blank page. I think maybe when I copied it, I didn't do something right, but... I think maybe when I copied it, I didn't do something right, but, so I'm answering the questions as, as I know them to be. If you have an exhibit D, it might be a little different than exactly what I'm saying. Again, I think, you know, as we look at section D, section E, it all talks about, you know, essentially that the parking issue are getting in and out of the facility.
Right, it does.
Design, so actually, when we look at section F, design and appearance of proposed building, structures, freestanding signs, screening and landscaping. I know some of the landscaping that's currently there needs to be removed. And, let me just give you, as far as entering and exiting. So customers will enter here, okay? They'll get checked in, come in, you know, figure out what they want to buy. When they leave, they'll go out the exit to the left, along that sidewalk, and back into the parking lot. Okay, so that's essentially the, you know, the human, the customers, how they get in and out. They're not going out the same door they come in. So with that, and this is where I was going, is right now, there's trees and shrubs over here. That will need to get removed, okay? One, we don't have the camera coverage over there, whatever, so that will be changing. There will be no other signs or anything that are freestanding. There'll be a sign on the building front, which I think one of the long sheets of paper you have there shows a rendering of what the sign looks like. Adequacy of water supply, surface, subsurface drainage and light. Again, maybe wrongly assuming that everything that was there was done with those considerations in mind.
That happened before, before this board, but the site plan review happened, the drainage was okay, the lighting-
Did they see the circular parking lot? Did they approve that?
Oh, that was there.
Really?
That was there. But it was also a total of 71 parking spaces. The circular driveway is not for what the Monroe Brothers are proposing.
No, I agree with you.
So that's changed, that's changed.
So if it's changed, you know, if the plan has changed since the site plan review, then does it need to go back to site plan for that?
No. Site plan review, they had 71 parking spaces. That's why it got approved. They've since gone away. You need to get back some number, whether that's 50 or whatever. So this is a whole process, as he said, it might take six months, might take a year, long shot of a year. And I think the only question I even have is just parking, the rest, the rest is controlled by the cannabis commission.
Absolutely.
So, and that's an easy solution. Colt's owns a bunch of buildings, a bunch of empty parking lots, but I feel bad that you're telling me, of course, with the crappy parking spaces.
In the interest of timeliness-
No, go ahead.
We've identified parking, it's on his homework list, he's going to go home and come back with an A-plus piece of work.
Right. Thanks for the confidence. I appreciate that.
Moving right along.
So I believe I'm on three.
Just a question on G, adequacy of light. Do you know, do you recall if there was consideration for restraint about the night sky issues, which always seems to come up, using the proper kind of lighting that doesn't give us light pollution? You even know what I'm talking about?
I know what you're talking about.
Did that come up?
Not until right now.
It just came up?
Yep.
I mean, I believe it's in our building codes, I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of, if you're planning, what kind of lights you're going to have, that they're, that they comply with the bylaws and the modern regulations about night light. So you don't, you don't pollute upwards.
So we're in industrial park, we're not in Times Square, so we don't have any grand illusions of some crazy lighting. Okay? So everything we do will-
You might have lights on for safety and security, too.
I'm sorry.
Might have lights on, they're always, that's a good safety issue at night, is to have lights on.
Yes.
And so when you're planning those lights for security purposes at night, just keep in mind that there is, there is an issue of, it's really the night sky pollution. There are standards, there are codes, there are new light receptacles that handle all that stuff. It's just picking the right lights. That's all. Done, move on.
Okay.
Page three.
So three, written operating procedures. Copy of written operating procedures as required by 935 CMR 500.105 and/or 935 CMR 301.105, which shall include at a minimum the following, security measures and compliance with 935 CMR 500.110 and/or 935 CMR 501.110 to the extent such information may be made publicly available. So employee, essentially, this is talking about our operating procedures and how we expect to handle not only security, emergency procedures, storage, preventing diversion to, of marijuana to individuals younger than 21. And it does also talk about policies and procedures for energy efficiency and conservation. So the operating procedures are in exhibit E. And what I can do is make sure I'm kind of following this correctly. I can review exhibit E, our operating procedures, and just kind of go down that list. And obviously, there's, you know, some significant text in there, I can summarize.
Wait, 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 this is, this is a lot here.
We should see the application for the state.
Is this, are your operating procedures unique and customized for this operation or are these canned standard boilerplate procedures that all of your businesses use?
For the most part, they're extremely similar. If there are variances, it's minor due to the, to the actual site, right? But as far as general security overview, you know, Mitch and I somewhat explained that. One of the things, limited access areas. So every room, every employee will have essentially a access card, and every door will have a card reader. So not every employee will be able to go into the vault. Not every employee will be able to go into like the manager's office, or the security office, or where we keep our, you know, server connections. So depending on manager, assistant manager, whatever, you will be able to either have access or not have access.
The problem with security, with, with card access, I mean, nothing wrong with what you're doing, but the, the general problem with card access is one person opens the door, 10 people go in.
So there's actually a few things that we can do about that, and I'm reviewing some quotes that we have. There's going to be cameras everywhere in that facility, obviously, except the, you know, the restroom and stuff. So we're going to know if somebody's going in or out when they shouldn't be. What you're talking about, and were you part of that conversation where it's tailgating?
Which one?
If you have somebody that cards into the vault and somebody follows right behind them.
So the dispensaries that I have now, it's, it's hard for the public to get behind the counters. And you have, you have bartenders there. For the public to get behind there and someone to bum rush in, it's very hard. They're processed, there's security there, they're watching. I've not had any problems with that at any of our sites. We all have card readers, and it's broken down, who can go, to what and where. And into both our locations is a double door, so the door will come in, you still have to swipe in to get into the vault. It's, it's, it's very tough to get in and get behind with security onsite.
So, I'm mentioning the vault, right? So an employee that has access, the proper access to the vault, can scan their card, walk in, and to your point, theoretically, another employee can walk in behind them. What Mitch is discussing too is the, the access that the public will have, they really can't get anywhere. There's, there isn't even a public restroom. So they'll come into the sales floor.
So there's no public restroom?
There isn't. It's not required for that space. And we don't, we want customers to be on camera the second they walk in to the second they leave. Okay. So essentially, the customer traffic, even though you see sales counters here, there's a gate here that has a card reader. Nobody's going to get by there. Plus, there's going to be multiple people standing, you know, servicing the customers. So-
So the bathrooms you show on that plan are just for employees?
Correct.
So there's no public restrooms, there's no handicap accessible bathrooms, anything like that?
I believe that bathroom is actually handicap accessible, but it is for employees only. And I, we verified that code with the CCC.
Okay, that lines up with the CCC.
Yeah. And even, granted, I haven't had the actual conversation with the building inspector officially, but, and I don't want to speak out of turn, because I believe I had that conversation when I'm not positive. So-
I just didn't know there was going to be a policy with product in, in the bathrooms, but no bathrooms, so.
Yeah, product stays behind the sales counter every night. Whatever's behind the sales counter gets emptied out and put back into the, into the vault. And that's it. You know, obviously, customers buy it and go out the exit door.
Can counsel weigh in on that? Are they required to have a public restroom there, Katie?
I actually don't know the answer to that. I'm not sure if it's specific in the regulations that they've addressed that, but it might be part of their architectural review that they, they weigh in on that.
Okay.
Have you been to a liquor store that has a public restroom?
Yeah.
Have you been to one that doesn't?
Yeah.
There are a lot of public facilities that don't require to have a public restroom.
Right, yeah, no, I, I don't see the, the need for a public restroom.
No, it would be better, I just don't know if it's required, that was my question.
Like I said, we check with the CCC, or through our turners, we check with them.
It should not be.
I think we're wasting our time.
I prefer not to have a-
Yeah, I think you're right.
Because then you've got to worry about what they're doing in there.
Let's move along.
So that's where I was discussing the limited access areas. Again, what I'm doing is I'm just kind of going through the operating procedures, hopefully it's covering some of the actual questions. Well, I know it is, I'm just not sure if it's the right order. Security and alarm requirements. So besides having the security guards there, the, the facility will be intrusion alarm. And I believe there's a requirement actually for backup intrusion alarm. Not only that, probably not going to use the right terminology, but essentially, it'll be panic buttons. So if, you know, someone is holding up the place or doing something they shouldn't, there's going to be buttons, like under the counter, like a bank would have, in the security office, they're going to be, you know, throughout the facility. Okay.
I have a question. Just on the exit from the dispensary, how do you prevent people from potentially entering through that exit?
So per CCC regulations-
You have a question, Lee?
Yes. So this is the entrance.
Right.
When they come in, you know, they get carded, all that good stuff.
Understood.
They exit that way. The simple question you're asking, how do you stop somebody from coming in? So this hallway here is essentially a shared hallway. They can only essentially go out of here and go left. We will have an employee here making sure that when somebody leaves, they leave, closing the door behind them. The NDB camera is pointed at the outside of the door, inside of that hallway, as well as the dispensary camera looking at that, which the security guards will be monitoring as well.
So you'll have a full-time employee there stationed throughout the-
Yeah, as long as-
Business hours?
Yeah.
Building sprinkled?
Yes.
So you're only going to have the one exit?
We have, there's an employee entrance/exit here. This is the customer entrance, and that is the customer exit.
Right, so it's not more than 75 feet travel distance with the sprinkled building? I think that, that works with the single exit. That's usually required to have two exits, that's, that was my, that's my thought. So I think you, it's not that big of a space, the retail area is-
That whole space that we have outlined in red?
Yeah.
Roughly 2,700 square feet.
2,700.
Yeah. Obviously, the, the, this whole area is sprinkled.
Right.
The only addition that we need to do is we're adding this little office space, so we need a branch of the sprinkler to go in there, but-
So in an emergency, would they be able to go exit through the entrance door? That's, I guess that's my question.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
They did review the-
I was just going to say-
Colt's storage building, corporate office, which is in that building, does not have a proper exit. We knew that only through the meetings, we could enter, which couldn't get out, but that's not the case here. And to make sure the crash paths are like this.
The building commissioner is-
Yeah.
Right, right.
Not yet.
Yeah, so I mean, you're going to be in compliance with all life safety issues to begin with, I think it would be necessary to-
The building inspector, the fire department.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident in that.
Yeah. And obviously, we had an architect draw up these plans, right, so-
But there's one thing that was picked up, the crash paths in there.
And I'm sorry if I'm jumping around and not following.
Keep going.
Okay.
Keep going.
Another one is incident reporting. So obviously, the CCC has pretty strict guidelines. If, you know, police, fire, anybody, you know, gets called to the property, we need to file a report. If anything else happens, like we essentially lost some product, you know, that all needs to get reported as well. Every night, we need to do a full inventory to make sure that everything reconciles, and if it's above a certain amount, that needs to get reported. And there's another, you know, comprehensive security protocol, again, that's something, once we work it out with the, the police chief, we won't be discussing that in, you know, open meeting. Let me go back to the question, make sure I'm doing okay here. So I, I think what I'll do is I'll just kind of finish, I'll, I'll finish going through the operating procedures and then go back to the questions. Employee security policies, like we mentioned, they will need to pass, they need to be over 21, obviously, and they need to pass all the background checks. Every employee will be trained, right? Not only, you know, with the product, but also all the CCC regulations, security protocols, everything related to that. Just a quick note, business hours, Monday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 9 p.m., Sunday, 10 to 5.
What are the hours, Sunday hours for a liquor store?
I don't remember.
I think it's noon.
I think it was-
That was with the blue laws, not in the morning.
I was going to say 9 o'clock in the morning.
I think that if it was normal retail, then they don't have to wait till noon time to open.
I think they do. Do you know?
I'm sorry.
The, the, the Sunday hours for a liquor store in Massachusetts, is it noon time? I thought that was the new blue law.
No, no. The old blue. I think that's a whole different time. Monkey's is open like 8 o'clock in the morning, and they're open until-
On Sunday?
Yeah.
I've been missing an hour or so.
No later than nine.
Okay. No, I, I've heard it. I, I, I don't drink any one.
8 a.m. to 11 p.m.
So we also have guidelines for storage of marijuana. And like I said, essentially, we need to keep track of, of everything. Everything that comes through the door is lock-controlled, everything that sells is lock-controlled, and there's, our system needs to tie into the state system. If there's any discrepancies, we need to alert the state and, you know, essentially go from there.
Do you track materials using barcodes or some kind of computerized automated system?
Yes. Yes. There's obviously emergency procedures, you know, in case of whatever, fire or any emergency situation that comes up. And again, this is part of the boilerplate that, you know, you kind of mentioned before. It's pretty much the same.
Is the training that you do something that Monroe Associates developed or is that prescribed in a state, a Commonwealth manual of some kind?
So we need to meet the CCC guidelines.
So they're, okay, that's what I really need to know, those guidelines.
So what we've done, because we have not been in this business before, is essentially we hire people, consultants, to make sure that we're doing everything per CCC and that it actually makes operational sense. So.
Thank you.
We're fully aware we don't have all the answers, but there are people that do. So we contact them. So you can see there's obviously, you know, responses to fire emergencies, metalwork emergencies, tornadoes even, in case we get one of those. Like I talked about, there's record keeping. It's all electronic. When we get a delivery, it all gets logged into the system. We take ownership of it. We make sure, and that's a two or three-person process, to just make sure we get some redundancy, to make sure, you know, somebody's not either purposely stealing something or accidentally missing what's coming in. There's, like I, I can't stress enough, there's going to be cameras everywhere. We'll probably have a camera over every register or over every point of sale. So we can match the sale to the product with the cash and/or charges that go along with it. And there are systems that tie the cameras right to the point-of-sale system. So we're accounting for, we're hoping to, you know, account for everything that happens everywhere. Again, one of the, one of the big concerns is diversion. And essentially, what we need to prevent is, you know, somebody 21 or older goes in, buys something, comes out, hands it to an 18-year-old kid in the parking lot. Okay, so with the cameras, the security guards, our employees, hypersensitive about that. We want to make sure if somebody buys some product, they get in the car that they came in and they drive off the property. Along with that, we want to make sure that they don't get in their vehicle and start using the product, you know, while they're there. They need to leave the property at that point, you know. They're kind of out of our control. They do talk about energy efficiency, right? And although this is a dispensary, not a grow facility, obviously, we're going to do the stuff that just makes sense, right? We don't want to waste energy, so we're going to have LED lights, you know, programmable thermostats, all that. There is no specific humidity or environmental controls in the vault, right? Because everything that we're going to be selling is prepackaged and sealed. We're not going to be having a jar and weighing stuff. It's all prepackaged, sealed, so we don't need to do any extra environmental controls. That's essentially the operating procedures. If I go back to the questions, section F. The zoning board of appeals may impose conditions reasonably appropriate to improve site design, traffic flow, public safety. And odor control, again, not an issue, everything's sealed, so it's not coming from us. And preserve the character of the surrounding area and its marijuana uses are operating under best management practices for energy use, waste disposal, and environmental impact. In addition to any specific conditions applicable to the applicant's marijuana use imposed by the zoning board of appeals, the following conditions shall apply to any special permit granted under this bylaw unless otherwise stated by the zoning board of appeals. So we talked about the hours of operation. You know, we'll guarantee no outside orders, but again, like I said, everything's sealed. Should not be an issue. We talked about the security and emergency plans. The permit holder shall provide to the zoning enforcement officer in chief of the police department, name, telephone number, and electronic mail address of contact person. That would be me. Along with me, it'll be, once we hire the store manager, it'll be that person as well as the assistant. The adult-use marijuana establishment or marijuana retail marijuana uses may not operate in, the special permit will not take effect until the applicant has obtained all the final license approvals or final certificates of registration from the cannabis control commission. So obviously, anything that you grant me is conditional upon all those final licenses. Adult-use marijuana establishment or marijuana retailer marijuana uses may not operate in a special permit and will not be valid unless the applicant has entered into a host community agreement with the town. Obviously, I wouldn't be standing in front of you if I did not have that. So that is essentially the narrative. We've covered the operating procedures. Again, the traffic impact statement is there. I can read it, but again, I think we kind of talked about the key points. And again, that was one thing that the planning board had some questions on, was the traffic. Basically, the wording in the traffic impact statement.
I'd like to direct members back to the previous page. Item one, the zoning board of appeals may set the hours of operation, but if none are specifically specified, the hours shall be 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monroe Associates asks for Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Do we feel that the hours they're requesting are appropriate? Do we object? Do we have an alternate that we'd suggest?
That's pretty much the hours any business or establishment would be open, so.
10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not wrong.
Okay. If that being the case, then I think I'd like to vote, I'd like to vote on approving the hours that they've requested. Would somebody make a motion to that effect?
Make a motion.
Is it seconded?
Absolutely.
Joe has seconded. Any discussion on the hours? One in favor, please.
Aye.
Katie, where should we go from here?
I think there have been a few issues that have been raised that perhaps require further.
His homework. His homework.
Yeah. So I would not recommend closing the public hearing until you have answers to your satisfaction. I would not recommend just closing and trying to do a decision conditional on approving something you haven't seen yet. So I think you might need more.
Do we need to ask for an extension or are we within our timeframe?
Oh, there's, as long as the public hearing is open, you're not under any.
Yeah, we just don't close the public hearing.
Yeah, don't close the public hearing and.
The issue, the issues, I think, revolved around our discomfort with the parking situation. Mr. Powderly raised that very well, and I think we've beat that one up. As well as the safe entrance and exit of people from the parking lot, whatever it might be. I voiced my concern about the cumbersome of that round parking lot and how tough it would be to navigate in that lot, people trying to pull in and pull out. You're not from Lakeville, but some of us know how tough it is sometimes to pull into Savises parking lot with people trying to navigate through there. It's difficult. So you, I think you're going to, you and your colleagues are going to try and come up with a better parking plan that offers your customers more parking space and some safer egress.
Yes.
That's the assignment you're taking away.
So that, fully understood. One of the questions that I have is, I think that's absolutely going to be work in progress. I need to, you know, get with the building owner, I need to get with Nature's Remedy, right? Again, to come up with a solution that kind of benefits everybody. Because I could easily go and say, Nature's Remedy, give me 30 parking spaces. And then, okay, now I'm good. But then theoretically, Nature's Remedy doesn't have enough parking spaces. Right? So I will absolutely work to, you know, bring that to some kind of closure. One of my concerns is I'm not sure how quickly I can make that happen.
So that leads to the next question. If we continue, it sounds like we're headed that way. How far out would you like to continue?
Well, let me, I don't know the answer to that. Obviously, if I can get answers in the next week, then I'd like to be on, you know, the next possible meeting. I don't know if it's going to take me several weeks to get those answers. That part, I don't know.
Okay. So what I would suggest is we put you on for next month and you come back. If you're ready to, if you're ready to revisit all these issues and talk to us, then we do it. If you're not, then you simply ask for another continuance.
Okay.
Do you do it month, do you mine month by month?
I think that's perfectly acceptable, right? And even if I just come, even if I don't have a completely defined solution, I can show up next month and give you an update as to where we are and the path.
And ask for more time. And at that point, then you ask for more time.
Exactly.
Is that okay with, there's no constructive grant on timeframes?
Not until you close the public hearing. As long as the public hearing is open and you continue it from meeting to meeting to date in time certain, the chain is not broken, the public hearing remains open. Once you close the public hearing, then you're under a timeframe to issue a decision.
Thank you.
So one of the questions I have is, I've explained how ugly the timeline is potentially for us to open. Now, granted, there could be changes within the state where they hire five more people and, you know, they change processes, whatever. And that timeline can get shortened by several months. What I'd like to do is, and I know it's not going to happen tonight, but just so you understand my perspective, the next thing that I can start working on is doing the build-out of the inside of that dispensary. Right? So I need to add a couple of walls to build the office, need to bring in the, you know, the POS stations and do all that. That's a couple of three-month process. So I guess my question is, before I can apply for a building permit, I need you guys to conditionally approve the special permit. Is my understanding correct on that?
Is there a way, legal and safe way for us to give some kind of conditional approval for him to get the building permits he needs for interior work, given that the, what he's asking to do has absolutely nothing to do with the parking issues that he'll be addressing?
I mean, you can always condition a decision. The issue is.
How specific do we have to be on a condition? I mean, if we make it general enough to say, conditional upon you meeting, you know, satisfactorily to the board's. To meet the parking.
Once granted, how do we, how would we?
That's the problem.
Resent that if he didn't meet our needs, what we wanted.
Exactly. When you get into an enforcement issue as to if it's sufficiently open-ended and there's a disagreement over the interpretation of that condition, then their appeal period on the permit has run. And how do they, you know, come back and challenge that?
So let me, let me sidestep things for just a second. I'd like to be a disagreeable person and say that we will require you to meet our parking expectations before we grant any approval. And that puts the pressure on you and your people to hurry up and fix that parking issue.
Yes. It does.
I mean, we're trying to do something, but there are legal implications for us that I, I'm not willing to take those risks on behalf of the board of the town. I think it'd be better if we simply did things the proper way. And that proper way would be to satisfy us with parking, with your, a solution to the parking questions that have been raised. And now there's an urgency on your side of the fence with your people to get that done for the reasons that you need.
So I completely understand where you're coming from on that. I guess the perspective that I'm looking at it from is, you know, you talked about enforcement, right? First of all, any special permit that you grant to me is going to be conditional on the CCC approval. Right? So even if the, and correct me if I'm wrong, right? But when you grant this special permit, I can't open the doors until the CCC has approved everything. And then you guys still have the final say at that point. So the CCC will not allow me to open unless you guys are in agreement with the special permit process. Right? That's my understanding. So if we, so theoretically, I understand you guys could conditionally approve me to get building permits. I could build it out. It could be absolutely ready to open. And you're concerned that if I didn't meet your parking concerns, that there would be some conflict or some issue there.
Once you've spent that money, you'll be vested, and it'll be very difficult for us to go back and try to get you to stop. So I don't know the exact term, counsel could help me with that.
So I think what you're saying is, and counsel can confirm this, we've put some condition on, to your point, if it's too ambiguous that we start arguing back and forth. It seems you're saying is, if we still are going back and forth, that the CCC will say, we're just not going to issue this for you because you still haven't cleaned everything up with zoning. My concern is.
How would they know?
I don't, but my concern to what you're proposing is that we are still going back and forth on this. The CCC issues the permit for you, and now all of a sudden, you can't open because they've given you the permit. And to counsel's point, we're going back and forth on this, and we end up in court fighting with you guys, but they're going to allow you to open.
The reason, the reason I think that we should kind of stand firm on this is a point that John brought up earlier. They went to the planning board showing 71 parking spaces, and they come to us showing 20. Am I understanding that right? 71 parking spaces for customers.
So.
So there's, so there's a wrinkle there that I don't like. Because we're, all the vote boards and committees are supposed to see exactly the same thing and make a decision based on all the same data. And apparently, there's a little wrinkle in the data.
Perfectly fine. I just wanted to throw out there, you know, the possibility of allowing me to get a building permit. And your point is clear. No issue with that. I just wanted to, you know, voice my.
I, I'd love to accelerate the process for you getting a building permit. If there was some way for us to go to our building commissioner and say, it looks like he's going to satisfy us once he fixes parking, but the interior work needs to be done. He wants to get going on it. Can you issue the permits early? I don't know if he can do that. Maybe not.
I doubt it would.
Nate's pretty.
I doubt it. I know Nate, he probably would.
He, I already have that comment.
There was not a big bill of in the, in the display area, if you will, other than the finished work, that little office, display cases. Point to say, you're not going to do that if you're a year away. You might want to.
And the other thing is, what I said before.
But I think you can sort this pack out the next month.
And the other thing, the other, what I said before is that if we stick with doing everything in the sequential fashion that we should, then as much as I hate to say, the pressure stays on you to get the parking issue solved and bring it back.
I'd also like to bring up the fact, the product transfer and the police chief's involvement in the design.
Okay, and so are you considering that a condition of granting a special permit? Because again, that's.
Again, you're going to be purchasing your product, and it has to go outside the building and then back into your side by the CCC. Is that, that's what you explained earlier.
CCC is essentially.
Right, so I think, you know, is the police chief aware of that? And how are you going to be transferring the product? I think that needs to be considered.
We did talk.
Yeah, he isn't aware of it?
And basically, it's going to go the way I come out of their area, come into our door because you can't, you can't.
I follow the same protocol as the outsourced or wherever else you're getting the product from. You're going to follow that same protocol.
We could be getting 50% of it.
Yeah, exactly. Somewhere else. Didn't know if you were going to get 90% of it and it was all just going through a back door.
The CCP has set the regulations.
On how to transport the CCC?
The goal was to be a grow facility. Cannabis commission got their rules, however, then you could transfer it in a separate office within the building. But that's something to look at from a safety point of view. You know, they get their rules, which are getting it from outside supplier, but it's in the same building. But I get it. But it is a point that how we transfer that safely. But it is a point to how we transfer that safely.
And is that a concern for the special permit?
No, I don't think so.
And let's not spin our wheels...
It's got to do with the cannabis, but Pete's point's well taken with the police.
Let's not spin our tires on it if it's not our concern.
Are we talking about the transporting at this point? Because you need to, I think this is very unique to this. I was only gonna suggest, why don't we just check with Chief Perkins and get some correspondence from him that he feels they've, they're satisfied, whatever conditions the CCC creates, or whatever conditions he has. You get a letter from the police chief, put it on record in the open...
We could, we could get that during the month delay, but that's my point.
Bring it back next month, and we'll see. So, thank you. I have one last question. How many parking spaces do you think I need?
Can I make a comment?
How many did planning approve?
I think... When? That's the question, right? Because the, when I went to the planning board last week, they approved the plan that you see in front of me.
We must have, we must have a copy of the original plan.
The 71 was for employees and public, but they had talked about there was always available parking and other cold storage parking lots, that they would work out if there was an excess, the grand opening. But if I had to guess a number, I would say 70% of what Northeast Alternatives has at their fall river location. And I'm not sure what that is, but you can go by there tomorrow. I don't know. Just come. I'm saying not even the size of that, but maybe 70%.
So...
I don't know. Come back with some alternatives.
I can definitely come back with some alternatives. I just, you know, I don't wanna come back and say, okay, I got 40 spots, and you're like, eh, it's still not good enough, you know?
I think 40 would be a better number than the 20, and then I think the queue area on this, you know, rotating driveway is a problem. I think that needs to be addressed. It's horrible design. I'm sorry, I know it's not your design, it's nothing personal.
But the access would be to handicap people that truly have medical requirements, that is, there wasn't even going to be a reservation required for medical people. That is, they come, they have the handicap permit, blah, 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 all their medical card, and they can park in a circular park. So it had to be available to them.
Okay, that's a new conversation. I haven't heard of that one.
He asked a question. He asked for a recommendation on the number of spots. Did you, did you get an answer?
What, not completely, but I think if you gave me a number, I was gonna come back and say, okay. Although I asked for a number, I don't think I want one. Not yet, right? Because I need to figure out completely what options I have in front of me.
I'd like to see your employees be on site. So you had 10 employees, you have 10, and you needed nine parking spaces, right, John?
That's code, but I mean, the more I look at this, I mean, we don't, that's code for...
Retail?
Retail, commercial, right now, and that encompasses everything.
Right, so if we double that, at 40, I think we'd probably be set.
It's nine plus one for each employee.
Right. But my point is, those regulations are based on pre-marijuana being, I mean, that's, that's our local, I mean, when you look at the traffic study here, they're grabbing numbers in, from all across the country, in venues where marijuana's been legal how many years now. So to your point, this is, you know, it's not as new as it was last year out in Western Mass, but it's still new enough that we're still gonna have the novelty of it and people from other states coming in. This, you know, 20 spots may be fine five years from now. So I, we, but we don't know what it's gonna be. So to use this study, which is drawing information from all over the country and other areas that it's already been legal for a number of years, I'm not sure if it's, if it's an adequate number. But I get your question. You'd like to have a number to say, can I or can't I do it? You don't just wanna be shooting in the dark and come back and say, hey, guys, I got 50 spots. Yeah, we still don't like 50 spots, maybe we'd like 60 now, so...
So, so I guess, right?
I see, there's two things with parking for me. One's the number of spaces, and one's the shape of the lot. I, I think that circular lot is a cumbersome, tedious, dangerous, difficult-to-navigate shape. That's me.
So I'm more worried about the number of spots. I'm not worried about the circular.
Well, if we agreed on everything...
The board wouldn't need all the square room, right?
That's only because he's in the insurance industry.
Actually, I shouldn't want the circular. I have to get into the body shop guys right now.
I still have an issue with the 15 minutes, though, under estimates in terms of parking, entering, purchasing, exiting, and out the parking lot. So that seems far underestimated, that's all.
So you gotta kind of look at that in a couple of lights, right?
If you...
I think Northeast Alternatives, you go by during the week.
There's really one forward, we go there on Saturday and Sunday at noon time, and you need about 70% of the parking spaces, would be my guess. But, so instead of me giving you a high number, which I would do, I'd go poke around, go to Wayham. Wayham's very, you see that space, you see the pocket across the street, you have two cops, one to help them across the street, one to let them in the building. So they certainly have more than 20 parking spaces.
So I guess there's, there's kind of a couple of issues. The, if you go to Northeast Alternatives when there isn't a line, usually people are in and out of there in under 15 minutes. Okay?
On a weekday, only.
When, when there's not a line.
When there's not a line, there's a line every weekend.
So if you can walk in, walk up to the counter, turn around and go...
Every weekend.
That's a number that we have Massachusetts data in the state on. Right? And I don't know if you do that, but you can go to Northeast Alternatives and check it out for yourself. When there's 35 people in line outside, obviously that 15-minute turnaround is not accurate. Okay? Now again, I'm going with what the consultants are telling me, the 15 minutes, the, you know, 80 spaces in an hour. I guess one of the things that I am a little confused on, and again, I agree that there probably isn't enough parking to make the traffic flow completely seamless. But there isn't a bylaw on that, and it's not just Lakeville. It's, every city and town does not have a parking guideline or bylaw for marijuana versus...
No, but they do for retail, and they do for warehousing, and they do for any other use.
They do, right?
They do have regulations for that.
That's essentially where they're recording.
Well, yeah, that's what, that's what they're...
And also flow and queues and related streets, that's all highly regulated or looked at during a site plan review. So again, if you've given planning board one site plan and you're giving us another, that's, that's a concern.
No, 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 this is the app...
Well, I'm hearing...
This is the site plan that I was given. Now granted, what you're talking about was Nature's Remedy. Yeah. And again, I think at that point, it was a grow in. It was a grow in.
Two site plans, different operations. This, this site plan is based on what you're proposing. The site plan John's referring to was, was, was pre-this, so I don't think there was anything with trying to hide anything, so...
No, there was no intent, certainly. But I know going to Wayham and going to Northeast Alternatives, you need a lot more than 20 parking spaces.
We beat this up pretty good.
Yeah, so come back with the maximum they'll be gonna get from the land law.
Okay. Again, I'll talk to Nature's Remedy, I'll talk to, you know, the building owner, and see what other options we have.
All the interested parties will wanna work quickly.
Yeah. I will do that.
So you're gonna come back next month if we continue, and that would be, what was the date? That would be 17th, 17 p.m. here. Is there a motion to accept his request for, are you requesting to continue?
Am I requesting what?
Are you requesting to continue to get this data?
Yes.
Okay, he'd like to continue. Like a motion to accept his request to continue to October 17th?
No move.
Joe has seconded. John made the motion, Joe seconded the motion. Any further discussion on continuing? You're, you're clear with what you're gonna bring back?
I'm gonna say the crystal, but I'm really gonna...
I'm gonna bring some parking stuff back.
And don't make the circle.
All in favor of the motion, please? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll see you next month. Thank you for your patience with us.
Thank you. See you next month.
Do we have anything else to do with the minutes?
Do you want?
No, I don't want it.
You think I got the AC or what?
I'm sound asleep already. You used to be able to make these meetings till midnight, you still aren't.
My alarm goes off at 4:00.
It's been 4:00 before. Getting older.
Yeah, welcome.
Can we take a minute to look at the minutes?
You got a new name?
I do?
Yeah.
Was it?
Peter.
Peter, yeah.
Call me Peter.
Oh, you called me Peter?
He was.
Oh, he was?
Yeah.
Wow. Could've been Morris, right?
Yep. Definitely could've been. He's playing new, too. We have enough to go on.
We've released, went to town with all of it.
No, actually, but it, you know, it all worked out.
Have folks looked at the July minutes, please? Are there any comments, revisions, amendments, changes, errors? Who would like to make a motion, please? Joe's making a motion to approve the July 18 minutes as presented. Who will second the motion?
It wasn't his, so I can't second it, I'm stating.
I didn't hear either. I can't.
I'll make a motion to accept the meetings as...
Seconding it.
You're seconding the motion. He made the motion.
Oh, all right, I know he was here.
He's made, seconded. Any further discussion?
I don't know.
And fortunately, it only takes three votes to accept the minutes. Supermajority.
That's all you got.
That's all you got for this? I'm just doing the counting, I get up to three. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Moving on to the August minutes. John, you weren't here either. Dan, you weren't here.
Nope. Same as above.
Oh my goodness.
I'll make a motion to accept the August 15 meeting.
Date was here.
And I'll second that.
So we have a supermajority all of a sudden.
We have a motion to second, Mr. Chairman.
A motion has been made to accept the August minutes. Who made the motion?
I did.
And has it been seconded?
By me.
Reseconded. Any discussion, changes, amendments? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Any opposed, non-opposed? Thank you. Any further business? We are adjourned at 9:27.